Around our math resource initiative. As mentioned at the last school board meeting, both the Ray School and the Marion Cross School have joined together in a math curriculum program initiative with the goal of adopting a common program across kindergarten through fifth grade or K through sixth, as is the case at Marion Cross. And we're continuing to follow the budget timeline with the intent of the full adoption of this program for the upcoming school year. So an update from last meeting. The committee considered five different programs for mathematics. Those included Bridges in Mathematics, Envision Mathematics Common Core, Eureka Math, and I Ready Classroom Mathematics, along with Illustive Mathematics. Committee members use a rating tool during their own research of the various programs. Additionally, the committee gathered feedback from other New Hampshire school districts about implementation, strengths, challenges, and lessons learned. Our most recent meeting was on November 8th. Curriculum captains submitted their top two recommendations from this list of five. Illustive Mathematics rose to the top as the clear choice. Since that meeting, Robin Steiner has gathered pricing information for materials, guides, workbooks, and professional development. This will be presented in the budget, and we are very excited to be moving forward purposefully with a focused and coherent program that will be implemented in K through five. Grade levels and teachers hosted their curriculum nights on Zoom during the month of October and November and has been filled with parent teacher conferences. We had two dedicated Wednesday afternoons, the third and the seventeenth of November, with some additional time in the afternoon of November 10th. Teachers scheduled other conferences outside of these dedicated afternoons in order to meet the needs of scheduling for families. Our next formal check-in will be in the month of January when progress reports will be sent home. I'm going to talk a little bit about what's happening on the Wednesday afternoons as our teachers were engaged in their parent teacher conferences. Our educational assistants had their own extended professional development time. On the third, educational assistants engaged in professional development with learning specialist and building special education coordinator Cindy Valance. The focus was on how to read, interpret, and implement the support designated for students in IEPs, Individualized Education Programs. On the seventeenth, educational assistants, that was today, educational assistants met with learning specialist Ellie Cook on the topic of how to support dysregulated students, focusing on the function of behavior and how to best respond to and/or prevent unexpected behavior. In addition to these extended sessions, educational assistants meet weekly with associate principal Nan Parsons around important topics for bite-sized PD. Our certified staff are also engaging in their own learning and development through coaching. So Nan and I are using a coaching cycle with all certified staff that includes observation, the collection of low inference data, naming and aligning to high leverage practices, and holding coaching meetings post-observation with the goal of fine tuning and growing practice. It is important that all certified staff, veteran or new, have the opportunity to reflect, learn, and grow. We're pretty honored to be part of this action-focused journey with all of our teachers. And finally, but we're all looking forward to Thanksgiving. We hope that everybody enjoys the Thanksgiving recess. Our hearts are full of gratitude for the support we receive from the community, the board, the SAU, and our families. We are grateful that we get to spend every day with our Ray students, growing and learning. And finally, an immense appreciation for our school staff that continues to work tirelessly on behalf of our students. Speaking of our students, here are some of the things that our students are thankful for that are currently being displayed outside the library area in a project spearheaded by our second grade team. One of the categories is family, playing fun games, laughing, pets, moms, dads, soccer, vacations with families, going out to breakfast, going for walks, siblings and family love. Another category, in-person school, math games, seeing friends, not sitting all day, books, reading, half-days, being out in nature, coworkers, and classmates. And then for our community as well, for Hanover, for Julia Griffin, our town manager, for firefighters, grocery store workers, the police, the armed forces, and community helpers keeping us safe. And with that, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Lauren?
Lauren, last night, Robin mentioned that math curriculum change as well from the cost associated with it. Is that cost, like you for Robin, is that $50,000 per Hanover as a total?
That's total with Marion Cross and Hanover.
And is there an annual maintenance fee associated with that?
There, if we want to purchase the printed materials for the kids, that would be an annual fee, and that's $25 per child, and it's four separate books. But otherwise, everything's included.
So with that $25,000, you can keep using the same thing year after year? You don't have to pay a annual fee?
Most of the materials are online. We can access them through an online system, so it's all readily available, so we can print out whatever we need. So that is an additional cost, but I haven't added that into it yet because I'm still trying to find out a little bit more information.
And as it stands now, as part of the annual budget anyway, there are subscriptions to digital access for investigations, there are workbook purchases that have been present in the budget, there's been professional development apps that students use. So it's been part of the budget, it's just going to be consolidated in a coherent manner and used for the same program across the school.
And will the sixth graders, this is more of a question, I should ask last night, will the sixth graders at RMS from Hanover get training in that as well, so there isn't a disparity when the Norwich schools come over?
They're actually already using it currently, so that's another nice aspect of adopting this program because we already have it in use in the sixth grade, and it's also being used for our algebra classes at the high school, so there are connections throughout the district.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lauren? And I also note that the next meeting will include a budget presentation. All right, next up, Principal of Norwich Schools donation, also Lauren.
Absolutely, so we had two submissions from staff here at the Ray School. The first submission was from associate principal Nan Parsons. We know that our playground outside is ADA compliant, that is, it's accessible for all of our students, but Nan wrote a friend's grant with the intent to make it not just accessible, but also inclusive and fun for all students. The grant itself was quite a large request, and the Friends of Hanover Norwich Schools decided to fund the preliminary part of it, which would be working with a consultant and somebody that knows playgrounds, accessibility, and inclusion really well, to create a plan for our outdoor space that will allow all students to have their needs met because we know recess works differently for all sorts of students. So we'll be using the Hanover Norwich Schools grant for hiring this consultant and coming in and redesigning some pieces of our playground. It is not our intent to overhaul or take down what we already have, but simply to continue to augment for all students. The second grant was submitted by our music teacher Becky Luce, and Becky Luce submitted this amazing grant where students will be able to use, I'm trying to think of the best way to describe that, I wish I had a visual for you. If you think about a Super Bowl ring and the way that she would wear a Super Bowl ring on your finger, and it's pretty large. Now imagine turning it around, so the large part is facing down, and wearing it on the end of your finger. So you'd have these little paddles, really, on the end of your finger. These paddles are aligned with different colors that have different notes, so students can learn how to drum and create melodies very excessively using these Spiro drums is what they're called. It's really a fascinating thing. So if you look around our music room and you see the colored stars, a student could wear a Spiro drum on their finger and tap a red star, and that red, the color red, is calibrated to a sound, and the drum on the finger creates that sound. Similarly, they can have a board with a variety of colors that they can use to also create melodies, sounds, songs, and rhythms. This is an important accessibility piece as well because when we have students here that maybe can't hold mallets, the way that it would be useful to hold a mallet if you're using drums or a xylophone, students are going to be able to use these very easily despite any type of sort of muscle tone or other accessibility issues to create melodies with their classmates and collaborate around that musical experience. You should really look on YouTube at some of these videos, they are very cool. So the Friends of Hanover Norwich Schools generously funded this grant as well. So if you see students walking around with a poorly phrased metaphor of Super Bowl rings on the end of your fingers, playing music, this Spiro drums generously funded by the Friends of Hanover Norwich Schools, and we are very grateful for their support of our programs here.
For the playground one, is the proposed, the general idea, an addition or renovation or kind of a little bit both?
I wouldn't say it's a renovation, I would say it's an addition, but part of it is, you know, front-loading this with really intentional work around what we do need to add, but it's going to be an add-on more than it's going to be a renovation. We're not intending to take anything down because what we do have is ADA compliant, it's just adding other options that are accessible for all of our students.
Any other questions for Lauren on these?
This may be a complete aside, but when you were describing these paddles, it made me think of something that I've heard on NPR, just the connections between color and the brain and music, and I just looked it up, and it's talking about synesthesia, and it just seems like it would be a really interesting conversation for teachers about that dimension of what the music program is doing and us.
Absolutely, and I am not a music teacher, and to hear Becky Luce describe this grant to the Friends of Hanover Norwich Schools, listening to it was very inspiring, and she used a lot of terminology that a music teacher would have, but there is so much more than just plain notes.
Sure, sure, great, thank you.
Quick question, so the, in the donation, it says it's a total of $25,0830, that's all gifts, what's the breakdown between each one?
Yep, $1,000 for the playground consultants, and then the other part is the Spiro drums.
Super neat. And are these things for the fingers, are they going to come in a variety of sizes for different age groups and that sort of thing?
Yes, they fit all students' fingers, yes.
Any other questions? Moving right along, John?
Oh no, I was gonna, while you moved along, I was gonna ask a question about, in the business requiring an action portion, I think we should move D out of the consent because it's a specific, thank you.
I fully agree.
And I can't believe I'm saying that because I love consent, Jonas, but I think that should be pulled out.
I agree, and I do note that the minutes on here are very detailed and thorough, and I appreciate that, however, Devin and I do have some amendments we've noted, so we'll get to that as well. Do I hear a motion for approving items B and C by consent? Taking out D, yes, John?
Move to approve items B and C by consent.
Second, myself. Okay, and then for terms of discussion, I would like to note, and Devin, help me out here, to define any specific things. On the minutes of the last meeting, I am looking on one, item number one, that Mr. Johnson here was not joining the Dresden School Board, he was becoming chair of the Dresden School Board, he was already on it previously, and that.
Once he was in writing, it was done.
And that for myself, I believe I abstained on the motion to appoint myself as chair.
That's correct.
And then Devin.
I think that was, it was the chair of one.
It was kind, you could go for yourself. I know, but I'm. All right, and then moving on, and then, oh, and we are all present, Kim is not here, okay, but she's not on Zoom either, so we can move. All hands up.
Question, do we need it as amended?
As amended, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, it's a motion to approve the amendment?
Motion to approve the.
We already have the first one on the table, then we will, so we'll do that one, and then.
So I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes as previously discussed.
Awesome. All hands up here, unanimous on the board members here, and then another one for the actual.
We wanted to do it backwards, we should have done the John motion.
Okay. Hands up for approving the John's written proposal. Now, stand my speech, and separately, item six, the, John again?
Move to approve with sincere gratitude the donation to the Friends of Hanover Norwich Schools in the amount of $2,508.30 as presented.
May I ask please, a bit of approval, unanimous again, thank you much everyone for that. Report of the chair, I have very little to add except that the next regular meeting will be on December 15th, so make sure it's on your calendars, and that will include a budget presentation, so you might want to have more time on your calendars. And that is all from me. Any committee members have anything to report? You can run, Jake?
Thanks. Well, at last evening's SAU meeting, I offered extended list of things that I'm grateful for, and I guess what I would add to Lauren's report is the fact that this year, probably as much if not more so than last year, has been extremely challenging for our staff, our administrators, our board members, our teachers and our support staff, for a lot of different reasons, not the least of which is the persistence of COVID-19, but really we've had some staffing challenges, we've had difficulty covering absences, and of course, we've encouraged people to stay out when they don't feel well. And so it's been really an all-hands-on-deck year at each of our schools, and despite that, our staff has done a remarkable job staying positive and doing incredibly important work they do. And so, so I would add that to Lauren's list of gratitude, thank you to you and your staff and to our board, really for seeing our community through this. It's really, at this point, to me, almost from ridiculous to sublime, and we think about how long we've been dealing with this pandemic, and it's really starting to seem like a sort of distant memory, that thing we called normal before, and really, really getting very antsy for a return to it, I'm sure really, everybody else is too. So in terms of the life of a school, the stretch of time between the opening day of school to Thanksgiving is probably one of, it's one of the largest relatively uninterrupted stretches of time in the school calendar. And in a normal year, people are getting pretty close to their last nerve and their wits' end as you approach Thanksgiving, and I can only imagine how people are feeling now, I know how I feel. So I am super excited that people will have a chance, a little bit of a chance to kick back, relax, regroup a little bit as we enjoy the Thanksgiving holiday and have a chance to, so on. I'll add my thanks to everyone involved, and my wish as well for everyone to have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
I have a question. I know it's too late for this year. I recognize last year, we were able to give the entire Thanksgiving week off, that Monday and Tuesday, and it was kind of a last minute as like a bone for the teachers and the staff. Is there thoughts to, in the future, coming back to that? Because I know that, I know that that was very well appreciated, and I think, you know, that might be worth looking at as we look at future calendars. I know it's another week off, but it's, you know, as you just said, it's a long time between the start of school and that break, so all of those two extra days might go a really long way for morale.
Yeah, we've given a lot of thought to that, I think we're probably going to need to find some other ways to help alleviate the stress, or at least to provide some sort of additional recognition. We're not, because we're not in a state of emergency this year, there's not the added flexibility with regard to instructional days and hours that we had last year, and if we did something like that, we'd be required to make it up later, and so we really haven't discussed this as a leadership team yet, but there's also the possibility that we could end up with a surge in infections, for example, that might require us to close school because we lack staff. And so we need to be, I think we need to be very careful with the number of days, so I'm wide open to people's creative ideas and how we can honor and provide some relief for our staff, but I think for now, we need to kind of stick to the calendar.
Yeah, so now, I was thinking more kind of long-term future as, you know, again, it was a really difficult year, and that was appreciated, I wonder if even in the future, it's probably not going to get easier for a teacher, or a principal, or an assistant principal, so it might be a nice way to find that balance somewhere in there if there are other days that you could kind of spread it out, I guess. I don't have the answer, I'm just throwing it out there.
We're looking at calendar now, so that's something we can certainly discuss at a later board meeting. We are, right now, we just got a sort of very early preview from the Hartford Area Career and Tech Center, which is sort of the anchor calendar for the region, let me kind of all base our school calendars around, and so, yeah, we can certainly take a look at modifying. We just have to make sure we get a requisite number of hours a day.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, hello everyone. So I thought I'd just fill you in on a few more details about math program, we'll reply about the adoption, our first foray into looking at the various programs, and now we're at the point, now that people have chosen Illustive, I've been meeting and talking with different company representatives, I've been some information sessions for teachers that were not a part of the committee, and the teachers who were a part of the committee, and then down the road, having some information sessions for parents as well, so they can have a hand in looking at the new program, and then looking into the different professional development opportunities that we'll have. There are some that will provide some information at the end of next year, and then move into the summer for a couple of days, and then training throughout next year, a few sessions, so I think that would be very helpful. That's one of the things that the members of the committee have spent a lot of time talking about, continued professional development as we move through the years and hiring in people, because a lot of times, what ends up happening is we adopt a program, we go through all this training, and it lasts for a year, and then new people come in and they don't have the same opportunities. I'm also looking at the materials, the company has provided a really comprehensive materials list, and we do have many materials on site, so we'll do some research and see what we have, and see what we really need to purchase, because I don't want to purchase items if we don't think them, so we'll be doing some inventorying of those items. So that is exciting news, it does put us in line with both Marion Cross and the Ray School, so I'm really excited about that, I feel like there are so many factors that are coming together. The other big piece is we have finished our first round of curriculum work with the Ray School, and we'll start a next round after Christmas, and that, I think, will be quite productive because we will have the opportunity to have Marion Cross at the table again, and so I'm looking forward to that collaboration, it's been so helpful, and people have spoken so highly of that, and as you know, the Ray School, being led by Lauren, she's already done a tremendous amount of work in this area, so I feel like they are just so far ahead, and I can't tell you how often I use the work here as exemplars of, you know, what we're looking to move to, so that's been exciting as well. So that's my report for tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I talked to you once in your office about curriculum stuff, and it looked like the stuff that you showed me was, I thought, really great, and there's a lot of interest in curriculum in the community that was expressed in people running for the school board, and I think it'd be nice if at some point you or Lauren or someone could give a presentation that's separate from the school board meeting that people could zoom into, explain all the work you've been doing, because it's pretty impressive so far.
Yeah, I think we could do something like that, I think it would be great for parents to see that, and for community members, because we really, a lot of work has already been done, that's really high-quality work, and like I said, I can't thank the Ray School enough and Lauren for her leadership in leading that effort prior to my arrival, I mean, she's already put so much in place, so it's really been wonderful for us to use that with other schools as well. I'll just give you an example, today I was working with the English Department of High School, and I pulled out the fourth grade, you know, long-range planning document from the Ray School, because honestly, I mean, when we were looking at the grade language arts standards, you'd think that they would be vastly different from the high school standards, but they're really not, it's just a different level of learning and understanding. So I said, look, you know, we've got these standards we're looking at in fourth grade for this unit, it's virtually the same as what we were talking about at the high school level, it's just that on a different level. So again, the work has been done, it's been quite well done, so I would be happy to do that now, where, once we can get out of throws for COVID now, I feel like I'm continually pulled back and forth between areas and activities, so I would be happy to do that.
I think we have extended the Morris turnout compared.
Great. And I know this came up last night, but could you refresh our memory for the Ray School audience of now that vaccines are available for grade-age children?
Yeah.
At the point where we're talking to that at the school.
For having a vaccine plan.
And then no.
Oh, yes, yes, there will be a plan to put that in place. I think I mentioned last night, we already have that in place at the high school and the middle school, and have been documenting it, and once we are underway, which we are now, we will ask the nurses to also document it at each of the elementary schools, because part of our move to remove masks will be dependent upon our vaccination rates. We set 80% as one of our, as one of our pieces to achieve before we remove masks in the school, so that'll be an important piece. But on that front as well, I've been working with Dark and Pitch Hop for vaccination clinics within the schools, and they actually just sent us an MOU today to move that forward as well, so, and that could be potentially here or RMS and at the high school as well, so.
So parents should find out, be able to come email very, very carefully.
Yes, yeah, well, the nurses have been the people that have sent it out previously, so I continue that. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you all.
Jamie, come on.
Thank you, Lauren. What's that? Oh, no, we're here to thank, we've been meeting since all day long. So good evening. First, I want to mention the document that's circulating, the MS-25 document, which requires signatures, and we initially signed that in September. The document has come up missing, I don't know where it is, I apologize for that, and in order to, the town finally filed their MS-1 today, so the DRA needs to now approve all of our documents in order to set tax rates for the school district, and that document's missing, and so we'll look that into tomorrow. I know she's reviewing the MS-24 that we sent in quite a while ago, now, because she's emailed me, she being King of Dell at the St. New Hampshire Department of Leadership, they're the folks we work with to set our tax rates for school district, so that's in process. I will do my best for the meetings, the budget meetings on Monday, to project what I think the tax rates will be for the 22, 23 budget. Hopefully, they'll have determined the tax rates for the 21, 22 budget by then, that makes it a little bit easier to make it when you're, fall out there. The rates should, for this year, come in lower, as the NAV is now higher, and that assessed valuation, I believe, came in higher at the town, and we had some different offsets of revenue as well. I will note, didn't do this at Dresden last night, but you have pretty long meetings, so I figured that that one was okay, we'll just do it here, and it will carry the same as Dresden, and even though it's. When we did our warrant articles for our technology warrants this past year, we didn't reset dollar amounts based on quotes that we had gotten earlier, not knowing what the supply and demand and supply chains would look like. Obviously, they came in a lot lower, and we were able to do, you know, self-financing and or finance less than what we had originally planned. Because the DRA doesn't like warrant articles that say "up to," we don't do that right off, so because we did set dollar amounts, this year, when we set, when we finalize our budget, we will have to include the whole total dollar amount that we had initially used for the warrant article, but don't fret, because what all that does is, we carry it in the revenue section higher, and we'll carry it in the expense section higher, and we know that we won't expect those two different dollar amounts, and they'll wash each other out, and that's fine, I've run it through the DRA, and that's fine, they'll just let it go, and their auditors will adjust it, and we go on, life is normal, okay? So I just wanted to let you know that, because when we put the budget documents out, the budget for this year is going to be. the budget for this year is gonna be a little bit higher than what you, than what we're actually gonna spend. Um the budget, so we've done two or three versions. Um we, meaning the administration, together with all the different teams. Uh we took our, what we would call, I think it's our version three, but the first draft, for publicized to the meetings at the Budget Committee uh with the Budget Committee members and actually some public folks showed up. Um on November first and kudos to Lauren and her team. Uh the budget guideline is given was at three and a quarter percent. And I believe our first draft came in at just over at three point four six percent. So that was, it's really great work on on the team's part to put that together. Um we have gone back and we're re-looking through all the different items. Um the insurance did come in higher than initially we wanted it at eight point nine percent. We budgeted it at five. However, that being said, there will be some discounting slash um rebating available. So we'll adjust those rates before it comes back out to you. It won't go below the five percent that we had initially. What else can I tell you? There's been many changes. I would say to folks, if you're really interested in doing a deep dive into our first draft, please visit more docs. Go to the section that says Hanover Budget Committee and there you can find a whole bunch of items that are posted, including the first draft, a significant changes overview, our enrollment projections, which we're gonna have to change. Well, we won't change them because they're based on October one, but now we know we are gonna be a little higher. Um and I think we've done a sort also by uh departments and objects. So I won't dive much deeper than that because all of those documents will be different on Monday when we meet again on uh eleven twenty two with the Hanover Finance Committee and our administrators.
What time is that?
And I believe that starts, the Hanover Finance Committee meeting will start at five, and then I believe we start at five thirty. Yeah.
So then that includes the Dresden budget too?
Yes, it'll be Hanover and Dresden. Dresden is fiercely adjusting numbers like now is history. Um Hanover, I think, we're in pretty good shape. So any questions? I don't know if I was supposed to talk about anything else.
No, so there's revenue documents that in the board doc?
That's the MS twenty four that's been filed. It's part of the tax rate setting process. Uh we just had to wait for the NAV to be finalized, which is the MS one for the town, which they did this morning about eight thirty.
And those numbers?
So we'll go through that with um with Jamie Dowd, Department of Revenue. They may ask us to adjust some. Sometimes they do that work based on percentages because you don't, we don't get fully reimbursed in New Hampshire for what was formerly known as catastrophic aid. It's now special education aid. The state um reimburses us based on a percentage of the whole total and the amount of money they set aside. So oftentimes, they'll adjust that late. Uh sometimes we don't agree and she'll say, oh, I think you should adjust that down. I'll say, no, I think it'll be okay. So they go based on what what we sign off on, okay? But when it's finalized, there'll be another form that will be filed and will say revised and accepted by the DRA.
Any other questions for Jamie?
Oh, and the only other thing is we're negotiating moving forward. Um had a support staff negotiation meeting today that we came fresh from the year and uh we're looking, things are looking good.
Okay.
Um it is my understanding you do not have need for a non-publicary?
No, Lauren does.
And um please sort of let me know anything you want to discuss at the next meeting? Does anyone have any things already they want to add to the next meeting together? I would take a motion for one more. Mr. Hunter?
Move to adjourn the meeting at seven forty PM.
Wait, wait for a second. All hands up. Is it unanimous? Is it unanimous? All right, thank you everyone. Good night.